All right, welcome everyone. We just convened executive session and moved back into public session at 6:35. We could have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any individuals who'd like to come up and speak during the public comment section? Seeing none. Are there any individuals who are using any type of electronic devices to record the meeting? All right, seeing none. Is there someone that would like to read the vision and mission?
Here we go. I don't have a reading.
Here we go Mitch.
Bourne Public Schools' mission is BPS is committed to connecting individuals to their growth potential, engaging the community in ways to facilitate student achievement, guarantee a relevant viable curriculum for students, and assuring universal accountability that supports the maximum academic potential and civic success of all students. The vision, we are committed to fostering a community where each and every student of Bourne Public Schools graduates with the knowledge, habits, and skills to collaborate effectively as our diverse society evolves. The town of Bourne continually empowers students and staff to achieve personal goals and demonstrate lifelong learning.
Thank you. First on our agenda, announcements.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of announcements, and I know others do as well. The first one I want to, the announcement I wanted to make is, for those of you watching on TV, you know, I don't have dirt on my face. I am working on Movember. This is Movember. I know Bourne High School staff has put out an all-call to all gentlemen who want to grow hair in their face for Movember, for a good cause, for men's health, and I've decided to partake this year. So, I'm giving it my best shot. It's not good, it's not clean, it's not pretty, but my daughter loves it, I can tell you that. The other announcement I want to make is that we do have an event coming up November 15th at the Barnstable Municipal Airport. This is the second time that we've had this exhibit. This is from the words of Warriors II, student art inspired by veteran and military stories by middle schools. Bourne Middle School partakes in this with Barnstable Middle School. It is, the exhibit is November 9th through November 18th. There is a closing reception there Tuesday, November 15th at 5:00 PM at the Barnstable Municipal Airport, 480 Barnstable Road. We attended this last year, and we look forward to attending it this year. It's a great, great event, and honoring our veterans, very timely for us. The next announcement that I have, that I wanted to mention, is for those interested in the Science and Engineering Expo that Bourne High, that Bourne Public Schools puts on, we have an information night Thursday, November 17th, 2016, at Bourne Middle School in the Bourne Middle School Library. It's at 6:00 PM. So, those who are interested, middle through high school, I believe, those who are interested in the Science and Engineering Expo, information night to learn, find out more information about your child's participating in our expo, please attend a meeting Thursday, November 17th, 2016. In addition, I know we have a, I was just trying to look it up, a veterans event at the Bourne Town Hall, a dedication of the statue out in front. I don't have the time off the top of my head. I want to say 11:00 in the morning.
Yes, because the band has to be there.
Yeah, Bourne High School Band is participating in that, but everyone's welcome, everyone's invited to attend that. We have sent out some notification on that, but it looks like it's going to be a great event for the community of Bourne on Friday, Veterans Day, November 11th. So, for those who are interested in attending, I'll try to get the time before all the other announcements are done, so I can make sure that I say that. But, that's what I have for announcements at this time.
And I have a couple.
Three?
As you recall, last month, we had some visitors here from England, and so I would like to present the school committee with some gifts. We received a box of goodies from Steph O'Neill from the Beatrix Potter School, and so we have enough of these for every school. There are two videos. One is Send Them to the Country. It's about the evacuation of the young people prior to World War II, 1939, so we've got that. And we've also got a Year in the Life of Sixth Graders here at the Beatrix Potter School. So, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also wanted to make an announcement about tomorrow is a busy day in the Bourne Public Schools. We have Veterans Day tribute going on here at the high school. I think it's around 10:15, someplace in that vicinity, and there will actually be veterans here. I know that the staff has put a lot of work into that. But, we also have something happening at our elementary schools tomorrow afternoon, and that is, school committee member Rhonda Toby is going to be doing a presentation on the Wampanoag Tribe for Grade III in our elementary schools tomorrow afternoon, both at Bourndale and at Peebles. And so, we're really excited to have her be able to come and talk with our students about the First Americans.
Oh, thank you.
And we had professional development yesterday, as you know, and I think the day went well. I know that we had elementary, we had teachers training, learning about Dibbels Next, which is a benchmarking system for literacy, and then we had Alice training both here at the high school and at the middle school. And I think that-
Any additional announcements?
Mr. Donio.
Mr. Donio.
I have one. This is a good one for somebody in the district. I'd like to announce, no, I want to announce he's retiring this week. He's officially retiring at the end of the year, but his last workday was this week, was on Mr. Les Wing, our maintenance league for the last 38 years.
Thirty-five years.
He's retired. You know, he's a great loss for his knowledge, but more a loss for his temperament and easygoing manner. Anybody's ever dealt with Les, which most everybody in the district, but only he has great things to say about Les, so he's a big one.
And when is his last day?
He's already worked. Monday was his last workday. He's officially retiring at the end of the year, but he's on vacation until his retirement is effective.
Is there anything planned for Les?
There is a surprise party next week for him that he knows about.
It's not a surprise.
He knows about it.
When, what time?
There is, there was a surprise party. He already knows about it. I'm not blowing surprise. He knows about it. So, there is, there is a party for him next week, I don't, that people have been invited to.
Next Friday, November 18th at-
Little Wanderers.
Wary Travelers.
Wary Travelers, yes.
What's the difference?
Wary Travelers at 6:00 PM.
It's off of Clay Pond Road, Valley Bars.
Yep.
It's at the end. What time is it, 6:00 to 7:00?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM?
It's like a potluck retirement dinner, retirement. He does know about it. He's been away for a while. It wasn't very good.
Well, we certainly extended our, you know, wishes, who wishes to last.
Yeah, I'm sure he has.
Yeah, Les has been around a long time. So, we hope he has a happy retirement.
He's not going anywhere permanently. I know he has some travel plans, but he's still going to live in the community, and he will be available as a historian for our district around mechanical systems.
His historical consultant, mechanical consultant.
It is 11:00 AM. I always write on the time for the veterans' celebration. It's the dedication of the soldiers and sailors monument. 11:00 AM Friday, outside Bourne Town Hall, 24 Perry Road, Buzzits Bay.
And this is a rededication. If you recall, last spring, we appropriated community preservation funding to restore the veterans monument that stands right in the center outside of Town Hall, and they've done some beautiful work with it.
They have.
So, that's, that's what this is about. It's a rededication for that memorial.
It's only one of two. The other one is at West Point, located at West Point. So, it's pretty unique.
Yes, it is. I do not see Audrey here for the student report, but we have in substitution, Mr. Strode, Daniel Strode, welcome.
Good evening. We have some exciting events coming to Bourne High School. Tomorrow, our history club is hosting their annual salute to our veterans event from 10:30 to 1:00 PM, in honor of their service to our country. Veterans from the community have been invited so that the high school students can interact with them and learn more about these heroic individuals. The BHS band and chorus will perform Congressman Keating, and State Representative Viera will be coming as well. All members of the school committee are invited. We hope you will be able to attend. Also, tomorrow is the opening night for the drama club's production of The Little Mermaid. The show includes students from both the high school and the middle school. It will be a great event for the whole family with great scenery and even some flying. The community is invited, and the show is not one to miss. Students' tickets are $5, senior citizen tickets are $14, and adult admission is The fall sports team had another great successful season. Boys and girls cross-country had a great season, which ended at the conference championship meet. Golf, volleyball, field hockey, girls and boys soccer made it to the MIAA state tournament. The boys soccer team also were SEC's champs. Football is still in the regular season and have a game tomorrow night away at Montemoy Regional High School at 6:00 PM. Finally, meet the coaches night for winter sports will be held on Tuesday, November 15th, starting at 6:00 PM in the BHS auditorium.
And also, Daniel, you might want to, we also have the sports awards banquet for fall sports, November 29th, I believe?
Yeah.
Here at the high school? Do you know the times of The Little Mermaid? How many shows and what the times are for the shows? Because I know they have several productions.
Not on Thursdays. Go ahead.
There's five shows.
Five shows?
I don't know.
Thursday night, Friday night, two on Saturday and one on Sunday.
I think it's 7:00 PM.
Seven.
7:00 PM Thursday and Friday, 1:30 in the 7:00 PM on Saturday, and then a afternoon matinee on Sunday, I believe.
And 1:30. So, three shows at 7:00, two shows at 1:30.
Yep.
Any questions for Daniel, since we can put him on the spot? He's in the-
Great job though, great first time doing it. It was awesome.
Good job, Daniel, thank you. And our next item is the presentation of the superintendent's Academic Excellent Award.
You're on the wrong agenda. That's the one you submitted, but that's not the one that was posted.
Uh-oh. School council roundtable. Look that out. Delete, delete.
Next month, that'll be next month.
Yeah, okay. School council roundtable. I'd like to invite the school council members to come on up, bring your chairs, and have a seat.
You'll see limited participation, because the PTA has an executive board meeting tonight, so a lot of cross-members between school council and PTA, so therefore, people couldn't make it this evening.
Okay, great. So, come on up. Who is here from school council? Come on up.
Would you like us as well?
Yes, yes, yeah, all school council members, grab your chairs and-
I used to be.
Yeah.
You can come closer.
You can come closer. You can grab a snack too, if you'd like.
The mandarins are really good.
Grab a snack.
Join me in eating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if you can all introduce yourselves, that'd be wonderful. We'll start with you, Sandy.
Sure, I'm Sandy LaCass, and I'm on the school council of Bourne High School. Amy Snyder, principal of Bourne High School.
Louis Gordon, student at Bourne High School.
Well, sorry, I'm principal of Bourne High School.
Janie Norton, principal of Peebles.
Liz Carpeino, principal of Bourndale.
Great. I think, you know, it's always a great opportunity to bring, you know, everyone together who's, plays such an important role in the education of our students, and the representation, you know, we have with the school councils, I think are, one of those important parts of our children's academics. But, if you want to maybe perhaps, for general public purposes, to sort of, you know, identify what a school council's role is, and why we have parents involved, students involved, administration involved in our school councils. So, Sandy, what are some of the things as a parent that you-
Sure, so one of the things that we do is work on the school improvement plan, which is interesting, if you're with the school council for a couple of years, you can actually see areas that we want to develop or improve upon, and then we make goals and actions to achieve that. And then, we're actually able to see, there's community-based goals, school goals for achievement for the students, and then maybe even the building itself. But, after a few years, you're able to see the growth or the achievements of those plans when they come to fruition, and then each year, our goals are all written in school-
District-wide?
District-wide, based on the school committee objectives. So, we're able to tweak them a little bit each year to stay in line with the district goals.
Great. And how do you see your role as a parent on the committee?
For one, I feel like it's a huge benefit to be a parent and be on the school council, because you hear true information, able to relay that back to the community, which it's really great to be able to hear information firsthand. And also, I like to be able to kind of take the, any concerns that I hear on the soccer field or the field hockey field, and bring them up front and be able to right away address them, so it's-
Okay. Thank you.
Way to be here.
And any other principals can jump in and talk about your role in school councils? I mean, we know, I mean, there might be some committee members who aren't familiar with school council, and of course, with the general public at large, since we are live, to sort of help identify.
I think what's great is having the parents on there and the community members, because sometimes we get so deep into what we're doing, it's nice to slow down, have people ask the simplest of questions that make the biggest difference in what we're actually doing, or, you know, remind us that we need to push it outside of the four walls of our school, and include more than the parents and the students, and how the Bourne community finds it important as well. So, I think that's been a really good kind of tuning fork, if you will, to see what's going on out in the community.
And I know for me, as a new principal, when you first start, you just feel like there's so much you need to improve on, and so it really helps kind of narrow down the scope and the focus of what it is that you're trying to do. And I think one of the great things about it is, it follows along the same stuff that the teachers do, with their own goals and their own educational plan and their own self-improvement. So, we're kind of modeling that for the school, which I think is a great process.
At the high school, we involve the students. And this year, I'm very excited, because we have more student involvement. Students are so engaged in all kinds of extra curriculum activities, whether it's athletics or drama. And this year, Louis is new, and as a senior, I've given him a couple of tasks to help out with.
He's a junior.
I'm sorry, junior, sorry. I gave him a couple of tasks to follow up on, because he's the junior on the school council. We have seniors on the school council, in terms of getting some feedback from the students for senior privileges and things like that, that we want feedback from all different levels. But, what's nice is, they bring, I think, to the table, you can kind of jump in here, but I just think they bring another perspective to the table.
They keep it real for us, too. And sometimes, when we go, oh, they really enjoy this, and my kid's like, yeah.
So, it's a little, it's a little unique at the high school, because they don't have students at the little and the elementary school, correct?
No.
Yeah. So, this year, we've expanded, and there are more students jumping in and participating, and it's a public meeting, so we welcome that. The school council in general, by law, does focus on four areas, the budget, the school improvement plan, the student handbook, and the data, the student achievement report. So, those are the four primary areas that we are supposed to stick to as agenda items, but I admit that we, because we have the input of the parents, and we have a community member, and we have students, we do tend to expand beyond that and get their feedback on other things that are going on, because it's just a great way to-
Yeah.
So, what do you think so far, Louis?
Well, I haven't, I haven't been to any school council meetings yet, because football's kind of-
Right.
... me back. But, I think it's-
Well, when you're back.
Take a little time.
Yeah. It's a great experience, though, and I think it's really beneficial to the school as well, because you can hear from the inside of the school and from the adults there that don't really know what's going on inside of the school, per se, like what's really happening.
From peer to peer.
Right, correct. They do have, they have a sense of what's going on, but what's going on in the lunchroom, what's happening at sports, and enrichment also, and other things like that. And I think it's going to be very beneficial for the seniors this year and for the seniors next year, because we're developing new ideas for the senior privileges, and we're figuring out ways to make it more fun.
Great, great.
Fun.
Yeah.
You talked about the budget. Is it just the budget for the high school, or is it the school-wide budget?
Individual building budget?
It's the district budget. We review kind of budget priorities as we start to get into planning, obviously, the overall is a big topic of conversation, you know, so, and how we, and how those impacts, how that impacts each of the, each of the buildings. So, you know, one of the big topics that has come up, at least at my school council, and others, is obviously the building projects. We've had some conversation about that, what that would mean, and what it would look like.
Do you find yourself, people coming, students coming up to you and saying, hey, can you fix this?
Oh, that's funny, because I was just thinking about that, actually.
Well, we get it, as school committee members, you know, when we're out about, you're on the football field, or you're in the coffee shop at Starbucks, or, ooh, I don't know if I could say that, you're in the coffee shop, or, a coffee shop, you know, when you're out there in the public eye, and they know your role, and it's a very valuable one, and for students to, so have you, have you been approached yet, or?
I haven't been approached yet. I don't think people really know that I'm on the school council right now, but-
They do now.
They do now, you're lying. Because all your peers are watching.
I was gonna say.
No. But, I think it's important for you to reach out to, to your peers.
Yeah.
I mean, like you said, you're in, you're in the trenches, and there's some value that you can bring to, to the school council, and how it affects all those areas that the school councils are charged with. So, but, but thank you for, for representing your peers and the students at Bourne High School.
I just also wanted to mention that this year, for the school committee meetings, we are rotating students in, so the students, Audrey, yeah, Daniel, and Louis is also serving as a liaison, so people will be back in December to provide the student reports, so.
Super.
I think one more good thing about school council is, and if anybody wants to be on school council in the future, I think sometimes all of us that sit in this room and go through things year after year, become, not complacent, but we just know the routine of what's coming up next, and so often, there are new parents at each school that don't know the programs or don't know the protocol of something, and often, when I'm approached by people, it's, how will I know if my kid gets to nature's classroom okay? Or, how do I, I mean, going back to each school, so, for me, it's a good filter to get the word out to other parents of, oh, don't worry, this is what's going to happen, just so that they know, because we're so used to knowing the plan, that we forget, I think, sometimes that for new people, it's all brand-new, all of these, the awards night for sports, or what happens there, or going to a camp, or the play and going to the school and what's going to happen, or the football games and what happens there. For some people, it's brand-new, like they're just getting a, an eighth grader that might go to the football game or something, so I feel like for school council, that's a good way of like filtering down information to the people.
Right, communication tools, yeah.
So, besides out, like around in the community, how do people know that you can be contacts? Like, and how are people encouraged to come to public types of meetings?
Amy sends out a-
The meetings are published, and I send them out through my e-mail, and I post them on our website as well, and I give them tasks to do, to reach out. One of the, one of the suggestions at the last meeting, one of the students was to create a survey as well, you know, for some feedback on how we could address back at mid-years and final exams, were the vehicle by which people use to qualify for, not qualify, but that was the caveat for having senior privileges, so others suggested to do a survey, which on that, it will indicate the reps on the school council that they can, they can answer.
But, there are public meetings, and last, last month, we even had another student pop in and said she might, might attend, and come on in, it's great.
Yeah, I think, it seems like there are a lot of times, there is a lot of things that happen, and you're right, it turns into being, okay, this is kind of routine, and, you know, we all know what we're talking about, but it's not very well-attended, and then when something important comes along, it's a matter of, oh, so how do we get people involved? So, it is, I'm glad to hear, you know, the invitations going out, you know, like verbal invitations or action items for people to get involved with it, because there's no sense in meeting if it's, you know, if people aren't jumping in and getting involved. How does somebody get involved, like get on the council?
Well, for, like, I know we publish it on our e-mails, trying to recruit people.
But, they're voted as members.
Right, and required by law.
Right, right. Any other questions?
I just want to give all of you accolades. I started at the school council at Peebles, and then at the middle school, and here I am on the school committee. It's a fantastic way to get plugged in with your community, with your school, with your teachers, with your admin, everybody. I can't say enough good things, just to be able to educate yourself. So, I encourage anyone out there who's interested, email the principals at the relative schools and get involved, because it's good, it's a win-win.
Absolutely.
I think one of the other things too, for, I don't want to speak for Liz, but I know for us, just in my short time, in terms of the school improvement plans and the directions we're trying to take the elementary school, you know, it's good for the teachers to see what we're, you know, what's, what's being tossed around and worked on, and then what supports are we, are we talking about trying to put into place, and what do we actually put into place? And so, last year, we added common planning time twice a month for the teachers, and we knew it wasn't enough, so this year it's four times.
Yeah.
And then adding the supports of two learning coaches in each elementary, one in each elementary school, plus the curriculum director. So, I think it's important for the teachers as well to see that, you know, we're trying to stay focused on improving the school, and, you know, being accountable to that.
Right, absolutely. Any other questions for the school council? Do you have any questions for us?
I have one quick question. Do you feel that some of the objectives that the school committees, you might have, would like some support to prior to our development of those objectives on a yearly basis?
Is the camera on?
No.
Was that a good question?
I guess-
As far as school council?
Because, yeah, the council takes some of the objectives that we work with, and we develop-
Takes all three.
And then you tweak it, as you said, which is perfect. You've got to put your own spin on it and continue. But, we're obviously looking for feedback prior to that point. That helps in our development, too. So, I guess, if you think that's important, I would ask that you find a way to get that to us. We usually develop our objectives at our summer workshops, which is sometime in the summer, July usually. So, maybe at the end, as a closure, or as maybe an agenda item for your school council toward the end of the year.
To circle back.
That would be helpful.
I think it's a great idea. But, I think in all reality, they, they are very focused with what's going on anyway. You're also in tune with what's happening in schools.
Well, we do get feedback. I mean, they're developed from, you know, the superintendent meeting with, you know, principals, administration, and then you obviously know what's happening in your schools, and we do get feedback on, on how-
Where they are, as they feel very relevant.
What's important in the district, and-
Yeah, definitely direct to-
Where we, yeah.
So, I think related, related to that, that we, I think, ended up changing last year, and upon when you write the actual, when you're writing our, whether it's the guidelines or the district guidelines for school improvement, the objectives, when we went to read them, and we had several students there, we actually stopped and said, what does that really mean? And the way that it was written was obviously very understandable to all of you, but I think the, and I don't know if it was because the, you were trying to keep the language in a certain way, so that it was just broad and a lot could fit under it, but we were really trying to figure out, what is it that we're supposed to be doing here? And for the kids, we ended up rewriting some things to put it in a different language, so that the kids knew what, what does that mean? It just, sometimes it's very fluffy.
I could tell you would love to see that.
Yeah.
Right.
Because, I mean, it surely sounds good at the time in a meeting, and, you know.
Right. We struggle too with, with the wording and the language of it, but we don't want to, we don't want to pigeonhole our objectives so that it doesn't relate to all levels. You know, we're a district of pre-K through 12, so, you know, we want each individual, the elementary, middle, and high school, to be able to run with something based on that, you know, like civic responsibility. You know, if we pigeonholed it too much and defined it too much, then- You know, if we pigeonholed it too much and defined it too much, then it probably wouldn't relate to an elementary level or, you know, so I think that's why it's a little broader and more general.
Maybe the length, the length.
But, but the wording, you're saying the actual wording.
The wording.
Okay.
I see the student stuff, what you were saying, just coming to a point about with summer workshop.
Well, that's, I think, especially given the conversation.
At least get feedback.
How the function of a district school committee actually works to help development, develop the, the direction of a town's district, that kind of feedback is critical. Great example, so that's certainly something that we would reach out and want to find. That if you've had, if you've had some questions about understanding, and especially the, I say children, you're bigger than me.
Students. Students.
Probably much better spoken. The children's perspective, the students' perspective is, is absolutely critical, because at the end of the day, they're going to be at our seat.
Or not even their perspective, but maybe somebody that's on the school council that's a parent or community member that isn't from an educational background, that doesn't know
The terminology, right, right.
Something more content-based, reflective practice.
Yeah.
It might have been a.
When we're explaining to the students, they do exactly, of course, the teachers knew, and it was.
Right.
It was just probably reflective practice.
But thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Keep up the great work. We appreciate your, your dedication and passion for it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. The principals will probably just stay. Since the next agenda item, school improvement plans.
Madam Chair, I'm going to, we're going to toss this over to Assistant Superintendent for Learning and Teaching, Susan Sleisman, to facilitate.
Thank you.
Okay.
Interesting conversation about the school improvement plans, because the objectives for this year did change a little bit. And I think that you're going to see in all the school improvement plans, which are in your folder, that there are some general themes across the district. One thing that I have seen happening over the years is that we're getting more and more aligned. Yes, every building has its own objectives, has its own goals, has its own issues that it really wants, you know, that they need to work on in each building, but we're getting to the place where they're very similar, and, and folks are working on the same things, especially at the elementary level. I've seen a lot of, they're working on the same things at the same times, which makes, makes it quite streamlined and more efficient, I, I think, in how we tackle our issue, our problems and look towards improving. But I do want to thank Amy Setner for bringing an idea to the table, because she and her school council actually last year set two-year goals. And I don't think that that's such a bad idea for schools, because sometimes we can bite off way too much and make our goals very big. And a lot, and as we know, a lot of what we're trying to do takes time. There's a learning curve for all the adults before we can actually implement things that are really good for kids. So, I'm, I'm going to suggest or make a recommendation that we allow a two-year kind of a school improvement plan. That doesn't mean that every, every year, we can take a look at it and benchmark in some way, how are we doing? And because I know that this year, I think Amy did tweak a couple of the goals based on what was going on, but, but really just, okay, took them another step, the same goal, another step forward. And so, I, I would like to make that recommendation to the, the school committee, because it just, it feels like it works at the high school. It's working, and I feel that it might work, but I haven't even said anything to the principals about that, so I'll see, I'll, I'll turn it over to them to see what they think.
It's actually right in line with what we were going to start with. We didn't even rehearse that.
Okay. So, is there anything that, that, any highlights that you want to share with the school committee? Because I know there's a lot about assessment in our school improvement plans, quite a bit. So, but I don't want to speak for the principals.
No, actually, Janie and I were, were putting ours together this year. We had the fortunate circumstance of Janie in the building, and she was able to attend my school council meeting with my members. And last year, when we presented it to you, it, it was as an elementary plan, and we really built upon that. And as Janie was just starting to say, we've been fortunate enough to now have a learning coach in each building this year, and we have our curriculum director who's working with us as well. And so, all of our goals and things that we were working on last year have only gotten deeper, they've gotten better. We're seeing so much more student-focused involvement and data collection and analysis, and really driven interventions and differentiation within the classroom. And a lot of that is reflected in what we've put in here and updated in our, in our goals this year.
Which has been a huge help to the teachers, so it's not just the teachers trying to collect their data and analyze it on their own. They have help organizing it and how to look at it, what does it, what does it mean, what is it telling us? And then, and as a result, we're able to inform our flexible groups, so we're able to get kids the appropriate interventions. So, it's been hugely helpful. It was the first year in, I don't know, this.
Long time.
Many years since they've had data meetings. So, that in and of itself is a huge help. And again, the increase in the common planning time from twice a month to four times a month has been hugely helpful as long, as well as keeping monthly common planning times. It's just.
And the joint faculty meetings.
Joint faculty meetings are terrific, and with the two learning coaches, it's, they've been terrific resources. And those two women have hit the ground.
Ooh, running.
Yes, they have.
It's been terrific, and they're working, they have such a partnership along with the new curriculum directors.
So, in looking at the teacher goals, I'm sorry, and the school improvement goals, and even discussing that with them, most recently, they just put out an à la carte menu to the teachers and wrote down different things that they're able to offer as assistants that they've heard of, updated items, and, and again, that it all comes full circle. They know what we're working on, and we've built it off of what the teachers' goals are and what we need them to focus on within the classroom. And the coaches are offering that as supports to make sure it's even stronger and happening more frequently, and that people are having the conversations, and bringing it back to the students, and bringing that back to us, and making sure we're getting what we need, and all the supports are in place. So, it's a really neat process to see unfold and just how strong it is. I mean, we could, Janie could be in my building, and someone's talking to her about it. I could be over at Peebles, and someone's talking to me about it. You know, they're very aware that they're two separate buildings, and we're going to have somewhat different experiences, but the curriculum and what we are teaching our students at that level should be the same, so that by the time they move up to the middle school, they, they have that same exposure and mastery of skills. And one of our favorite goals this year, I think, is really focusing in on the science. You know, we, we know that there's a lot that's needed in that area, and between natural sites that we have at our buildings, and bringing in mystery science as a program to assist, and the new standards coming out, you know, that was a big push, so to be able to include that was huge for the teachers.
And we needed to approve that.
Very much so.
Yeah, for the transition to fifth grade, because it definitely had an impact on the middle school, so.
I think, I think one of the things, you know, everything you talked about has all been born out of, you know, the, the student councils and coming to the school committee meetings, because, I mean, we're dating ourselves now, Chris and I, and when we first came on board, yes. One of the things that always rang true was the need for looking at data, and how data informs instruction, and the support and the resources that teachers need. And it's, it's, you know, I think we're coming to the point now where all of that is becoming very fluid, and it's coming together, the, the district improvement plan and the strategic plan, and, and looking at the school improvement plans, and listening to what the teachers' needs have been, and to finally reach a point, I wish we had reached it earlier, you know, but of course, budgetary constraints kind of lent itself to, you know, have to stretch the, the dollar and, you know, gradually kind of get there. But, you know, it's, it's just so great to hear that we have the ability to have that vertical and horizontal alignment of the curriculum that has been a focus and goal for our student success, and it's such a critical element in that success. So, you know, it's, it's happening. We're there, and, you know, the data's showing it, the support for the data. Do you foresee any additional, I'm sure this discussion will come up in budget priorities, but any additional, just off the top of your head, through this process and looking at the school improvement plans, what other additional resources to help with, with this particular plan that's moving forward?
Probably the biggest thing we're hearing is, again, some of the science resources, but also, and Mer is looking into this this year, but the, the reading texts that we have available for students, and the variety. It's a good problem to have. We have a lot of students at different levels, younger levels who are reading much higher, and, you know, we'd like to bring in some more relevant resources for them to be reading, and so I think those are probably our two biggest that we hear about.
Yeah, and updated.
Any questions for the, so you, you have two objectives that you're focusing in on in your school improvement plan, right? Because I don't see the civic, did I miss that?
The last one is the science.
Right, but that's part of, that's sort of a sub.
The first one is literacy for the fluency comprehension, and then the second one was the.
No, I mean, out of our school committee goals.
Oh, okay.
Two out of the three, right? Is what you're focusing on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Right. I just want to make sure I'm on the right page, and I'm not missing anything. Okay, great. Any questions for Liz or Jane? No?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Melissa? Highlights?
To the elementary schools, middle school also has a large focus on reviewing the data and then what we do with that data, and support it through the practice of using that data to make some strategic decisions. So, in particular, the middle school targeted UBCAMAT. We added sixth, seventh, and eighth grade into the UBCAMAT roll-out this year, whereas fifth grade was with the elementary school last year, so there's some, some work there. And then, we also are targeting informational literacy as well as the use of vocabulary. And as a school, we talk a lot about our, our data and what it represents as, as a school, rather than an individual content area, and what each, what each teacher and class, what role they play in, in our school's data and the picture that it paints for our school. So, the informational literacy and the vocabulary are not designed to be specific to English-language arts, but rather are designed to be specific to all the content areas.
Okay.
Where informational literacy, informational text would exist in content areas across the, across the school, as well as vocabulary, and what strategies were used to support students through using both informational text and vocabulary to master their content. And then, the other thing that has always been a big focus for us, I think, it's going to fit nicely into the citizenship and the civic responsibility, is, you know, we do quite a bit of work with some community agencies, particularly Mark on anti-bullying. We have connected ourselves with C schools through the Department of Ed this year.
You have the Rachel Club, right?
We do do, yep, we do, we do have a Friends of Rachel Club. Actually, the Friends of Rachel, we call it the Four Club. They are a group of students, a group of 40 students, that are tasked with providing acts of kindness across our building, promoting acts of kindness. So, this past month, if you haven't seen them, you should stop by the middle school soon, because they are, we're just finishing putting them all on display. They had a contest of which home room could create the best anti-bullying bulletin board, and a winner was going to get displayed in our front. So, they ended up picking three winners, but all of the posters, so it'll be a three-month process. But, all of the posters are, I mean, I can't even, they're beautiful, they're, they're spectacular, and they will be displayed down our main hallway on the, on the bulletin board. So, so it's through, through, through that, those opportunities that we're teaching our kids, you know, citizenship and how to be responsible people.
Right.
Kindness.
Right.
So, that has been a really great.
Responsible for their actions and how their actions affect others.
And their community.
And their community, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that has been really great.
That's great. And then, I see the last objective. I'm sure there's, there's going to be a lot of conversation, you know, I was, it didn't hit me until I read, you know, your objective to the district-wide improvement of learning teaching through reconfiguration of the grades spans, and how that schedule at the middle school is going to be affected by, by this reconfiguration.
So, this was a challenge.
It's not something I had thought about, and I said, oh, dear God, I was reading, I'm like, wow. Okay.
This was a challenge for us to write, but I think it was an important one that we made a connection to. So, it was challenging, because a large portion of that is undecided right now, and the conversation that we will have a month from now could look very different than the conversation that we're having right now. So, there are some things that are happening at the middle school that I think lend itself well to the topic of this. We have been looking at our master schedule. We have, last, we had a group last year, and we are continuing that group this year, that is looking at our master schedule, the instructional time, how we offer particular courses, how kids get recommended into those courses. So, they've been doing a lot of that work, so that does kind of lend nicely to continuing that conversation if we were to, excuse me, if we were to move to.
Reconfigure.
To the grades spans. So, those are really good first steps for us, and then kind of moving in that direction. And I'm sure those conversations will get, will get deeper, but as a community, to kind of, to kind of even begin to think about that.
Right, right.
It seemed like a nice way to kind of start to, to think about some of those things.
Start to think, right.
So, the schedule committee is, has been meeting, but they are meeting, they have held off meeting until December this year to see how, to see how it goes. Which way it goes.
Right, right, yeah. And the only other thing that stuck out, do you have any, any questions for, sorry.
You're doing a great job.
The only other thing that popped out at me that I would move to strike would be the last line on page six. I know you make effective use of district and school resources to the best you pretend you, however, I do not think the budget is sufficient. Uh-oh, I'll look for something else. No, a very robust 75%, I think, at or above is just such a great goal to, to reach for. I, you know, I'm excited about, about seeing that as part of, part of your school improvement plan. It's very robust, and I know, I know, I know you'll get there. I know everybody will, will get there.
Especially with the two-year plan.
Especially, especially with the two-year plan. So, I'm, I'm trying to think of formulating the, the vote, but I guess, the motion.
Do you have budget priorities? Beyond sufficient?
Beyond sufficient.
Just be thinking about that, I guess.
Yeah, and the, yeah, and nothing that kind of stands out as alarming right now. I mean, we also have been going through the change to the science standards and how, how those resources shift across grade levels. I think Mr. Martin was on the question. I think Mr. Martin Marsha and Amazon are questioning there to support some of those kinds of things.
And then is the building, was it 250 students? I thought it was greater.
What building?
The new school building.
That jumps out.
460.
Right.
463, I think, exactly.
Okay.
460.
So it says 250 on page seven, your third objective.
The last one, build a new school to accommodate approximately.
250 general education students. That was all.
That was the current.
460.
Right.
It's 460.
Now I'm going to have to read it for like a fourth time. Although I did start some things, so maybe I was. So I'm sorry, I jumped here. So additional resources, I missed your answer.
She, Amazon, she would get back to you.
I know through the budgetary process that we'll eventually see those priorities in the need.
Yeah.
So great, thank you. Ms. Zetna?
So we are honoring our two-year plan, although with NEASK coming and going, we've already had discussions about some of the goals that we may be thinking about for the upcoming year, which is very interesting in this process. And we obtained those discussions because, you know, you just received this feedback recently, which I know is exaggerated. Again, you know, just in terms of continuously improving and taking in that feedback from outside sources as well. So in keeping with our two-year plan that we developed last year, our three goals are centered around number one, continuously trying to expand our programming for our school-to-careers program to expand beyond just the juniors and seniors that have been primarily targeting students in those grades and expanding it to grade nine and 10. We made some progress last year, shared the feedback, but we do do a, I don't know if we mentioned it, but we do do a survey at the conclusion of the year to get feedback as well in terms of how we're meeting all of our goals. So based on that information, that's why we tweak things and update things, similar to the teacher and administrator process that we run ourselves every year. So we're all used to this workflow process. The other goal, two-year goal, was to provide opportunities, more, increased opportunities for students to use inquiry-based learning. Again, this was a little bit dark in the experience of students in the process, but they understand it. The students get some great feedback in terms of how they're seeing that increased frequency with, whether it's using the Innovation Studio, but also recognizing that you don't have to be in that physical facility to be engaging in this process. So great discussion around that. And then the third goal is the reflective practice piece, engaging students in reflective practice, opportunities to resell their work, to continuously improve, and to gauge their own targets. And these goals, again, as much as they're two-year goals, there are a lot of new things going on at K-School with the pressure, you know, we're really excited that our teachers have it out on campus every week, that's new, they've never had that before by department. And they're working tirelessly at developing new common assessments, unit assessments. And those things are tied into the work that we're doing now in terms of what the expectations are for developing and working together as departments are to develop those common assessments with inquiry, you know, infusing more opportunities for inquiry-based learning and reflective practice. So everything is, it's nice because in the past we would have multiple goals and they were kind of unrelated and then we'd set new goals and then, you know, so this is nice, it's a nice streamlined process. So we're excited to continue this year, but again, we're already looking forward to next year in terms of some of the tools that we're going to use. A lot of that's feedback, again, it's a little different from the other schools, a lot of the feedback in terms of what goals are set is from the parents, from the teachers, and from the students who are part of that process.
And now you have the addition of the NEASK feedback to.
Yes.
Throw in the mix.
Absolutely.
I think for the school committee too, one of the things we had discussed was to try to keep our objectives as well for more than a year, which I think, you know, because it does take three, at least three years for change to happen anyway, three to five years. So in order to have that consistency for our district, I think it's important to, for us to, to just focus in on a small number of goals to begin with and to be consistent with those goals as we are with our vision and mission.
And I just want to let you know that the elementary coaching menu is in the file, so you can take a look at it. The one that Janie has referred to. Isn't it cute?
It is, yeah, it's adorable.
Yeah, we really can't say enough about that. Between the curriculum director and the two coaches worked phenomenally well together and.
Fantastic.
Yeah, they're great.
The learning coaches ran a book club today and definitely trumped the fork-on committee a little bit. And it went to the learning coaches.
You weren't kidding when you said menu.
Yeah, they truly did do a menu. Yeah.
That's fantastic. So for you two, Amy, in the foreseeable future, resources or additional support in any form?
The work that we're doing at the high school, I think, really additional professional development, some feedback, of course, feedback for the most recent in services, it just gives more time, you know, there's never enough time, we understand that. So whatever we can do to support infusing whether professional development or even ways, creative ways that we can create opportunities to expand the work from departments working with each other to develop the common unit assessments. There are a chunk of it that certain, you know, teachers have already inquired about how do I get time to do cross-curricular units of study with other departments really like to do that. So, and again, that's open now, we're saying just tell us what you need and what we're happy to support. And if, you know, any additions or requests, we're happy to contact you.
Okay.
Off of that, that's first thing.
So, and I'm sure all, you're in close contact with the representatives from the each building or each level, right, on the professional development committee? There's representation.
Every building has representatives from the professional development committee, yes, and they should be definitely bringing ideas to the committee. One of the things, though, that we have to keep in mind is that we only have two days every year now. So a lot of our professional development needs to be building-based so that we can use the half-days. And that's why when they referred to the coaches today, starting their book club, we do have opportunities now for teacher facilitated, teacher-developed professional development for PDPs to be done all year-round after school. So there are opportunities, we just need to get the word out there and have people taking advantage of that.
Okay. Any questions for the high school? Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all your work.
We just need you for the next one, too.
Should have just. Okay, our next agenda item is.
I'll take it, I'll take it to each other.
They are, great support. So in continuing with NEASK, because that's been quite a process and an ongoing process.
Is it over?
We've had our, is it over? I think the, I think somewhat, we should, I think we're just about there. So we recently had the NEASK visit for a few days, so if you can just give us some highlights and feedback surrounding that visit. I attended the visit. It was, it was an amazing, my first experience with NEASK and being a part of the process.
It's pretty intense.
It's pretty intense. It's pretty intense.
I might still have a NEASK came over, but I'm not sure about that. No, it was, it actually went very smoothly, you know, we were chomping at the bit for them to come, so, because we look forward to it, but they did arrive on Sunday, they stayed through Wednesday. It was four days of real intensive, minute-to-minute schedule between the opening remarks on Sunday and then the reception that we had in the Innovation Studio, which was well-attended by students and parents and many of the people, thank you very much. Teachers were all here. And then on Monday, Tuesday, there were student shadows going on where they actually went and attended full classes with students, even lunch, they attended lunch with students, which was great. I saw one committee member take their lunch and sit outside with one of the students and wanted to sit outside, which was great. So they were very amenable to that. They also interviewed groups of students, they interviewed groups of parents, groups of teachers, it was all encompassing for sure. In addition to that, they worked at the professional library, which was their workroom. We had, over the past few years, we've been collecting evidence to support standards and so forth. So we feel pretty good about the visit. We, on our own, identified our strengths and weaknesses and, you know, we're really confident that the strengths and weaknesses that we identified are the ones that they're recognizing as well. They gave us a nice pat on the back for the work that we're doing in terms of developing common assessments and looking for us to continue that work and also really emphasize the relationships among staff and students as being a real highlight of their visit. They couldn't believe how, it's funny because our visitors from England said the same thing, but they couldn't believe how seamless the kids come in and out of the cafeteria, how quiet they are, how polite they are. So it was just, I think it was a great experience. Other than the teachers might have had a shadow in a classroom for, you know, a block here or there, it really wasn't a disruption to our day at all. It's a well-oiled machine and finely tuned, they know what they're doing, they train their visiting team very well, and it's seamless and it was.
I know in our meeting they were very specific and direct with their questions and their time.
Yes, yes. And honestly, I tried to explain that, that came out of my school council meeting with the students, because the students were like, oh, it's going to happen like this and that, but they were asking these specific questions.
Right.
Even one of the parents after one of the meetings said, you know, we didn't have a chance to answer any questions or provide them feedback on the things that we wanted to type of thing. And I explained that they're very, they're very specific and that's their rubric. And if they're not that specific with the types of questions they ask with each group, you know, to maintain the integrity of what information they're gathering to support the standard, then that lends itself to a little bit of chaos when it comes time to writing it. So it is, it's not because they're not interested in each and every bit of information, it's just that the information has to be aligned with the rubrics that they're using to create that report. So it's the same whether they're at Born High School or any other high school in Portland.
Correct, correct, yeah. No, it's a specific task. It's an accreditation.
Yes.
It's not a, I don't know, I don't know how to phrase it. It wasn't, you know, just to have conversation, to have conversation about how you're feeling and how you think things are going.
Right, right.
They were there for a specific task.
Right.
To help, you know, where we are at with our high school.
Right, right.
In those standards, yeah.
Because they are giving us specific feedback based on the seven standards for accreditation. And they'll highlight, you know, things that they feel that we're doing well and they'll give us recommendations for improvement and we look forward to those and, you know, we can always improve and it's nice to have a set of eyes and ears outside of this building from other professionals who work in other districts, there are teachers and administrators just like all of us, so we welcome their feedback and we know that they're valuing that and look forward to it.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. So you have a genuine, an interesting background because you've been on the visiting part of NEASK and then you've just gone through a full-blown NEASK investigation or whatever you want to call it, just.
Accreditation.
Accreditation process, the whole thing.
Investigation.
Very similar, yeah.
At least from our questions that we've had to answer, it was like.
Yeah, we're just like.
So do you think that they had an opportunity to experience Bourne education?
I think that they did. I feel strongly that they did.
I mean, they came in predetermined, had it directed, we couldn't really guide them. We tried. But you thought that they, you know, they got what they needed?
Yes, I believe that they.
And it represents Bourne.
I believe that they followed the process with integrity. I thought the chair, Kevin, was, he was just outstanding. He met with me daily and, you know, it's, you know, I found these visits on the other side so many times that being on this side of it was a little different for me, so it was great to have him, you know, kind of walk me through that process as well, since I haven't done that side of it in 10 years. And, you know, I just, I appreciated the way that he went about it as a chair and I'm trained as a chair and they, you know, kind of inquired if I would go out to help co-chair a visit and I feel that he helped them all for me, you know, really nice process. So that's, you know, that's just a thank you to Kevin, if you will, because he was outstanding in terms of serving as a chair in that process.
I just want to thank the Bourne High School staff for the incredible amount of work that they put into it, but not only that, the days that they were here, it was very intense. So the days that they were here, the staff came into work and did their job and they really need to be commended for that. Two staff members in particular, Rachel Turner and Leslie Sullivan, should really be credited for a lot of facilitation of this as the co-chairs of the NEASK visiting team, because it isn't just, that's not the most, you know, luxury jobs or, I'm not saying it the right way, but, I mean, you're really serving the needs of 13 individuals, you know, right down to, you know, making sure that they're fed well and all of that.
Correct.
So they really deserve a lot of credit. Bourne High School administration put an incredible amount of effort into this. You know, we knew that it was, they needed time to prepare and, you know, watch this unfold. This was like, you know, a slow-moving train crash to a certain extent, meaning that you know it's happening, you can't stop it, it keeps coming at you.
It doesn't crash.
But it doesn't crash.
It doesn't crash.
It doesn't crash.
There's no crashing, this is the record.
It doesn't derail. It's just steady.
You have that feeling.
Go motion.
And the last thing I want to say is this really, this process, it's too bad it's only Bourne High School because it blows the doors off of a CDSA review.
Oh my goodness, there's no comparison.
The Center for District and School Accountability. When, Ms. Dilber, when you asked that question, they came in and they looked at every corner of this facility in place and how the rest of the district interacts with it and, I mean, they, again, it blows the doors off of what we went through with the Center for District and School Accountability process with DESI. I guarantee we're going to get a more robust pathway as to how we can improve, because we're on a continuous path of improvement. We didn't expect to walk away with a blue ribbon saying you're done.
Right.
Okay? So we know that, you know, we didn't crash the train, but we know that we're in a position that we need to continuously improve. I'll never get out of that one, but.
No.
Televised.
But you knew it was coming, but you couldn't stop. But they were very professional, they had lots of integrity. It was kind of, it was, you thought you'd feel a relief when they left, but you were kind of like, well, wait, what happened? You know, it wasn't really, it wasn't a relief thing, it was, you know, well, for me it wasn't, it may have been for high school staff, but it was more, you know, we want to tell you more, we want to share more, because they were that invested in the process. So I really appreciate Bourne High School staff and what they went through and I hope that, you know, it does prove to be a good pathway for them moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to stay.
You waiting for another good joke or something? So par, is that what they call it?
So par, yes, so par.
Thank you. Take some goodies for the road, or the little ones.
Thank you.
Can I just say that it's been really nice to have learning and teaching take so much time of a school committee meeting? Seriously.
All right, moving on to our school building committee update, results of the town meeting vote and what the next steps are and today's meeting in Boston. So.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
So, yes, Mr. Donahue and myself, plus Joe Seeley from SMMA and Ken Kovacs from Flensburg Architects met with our, it was actually a very well-attended meeting.
Architects, met with our, it was actually a very well-attended meeting. There were many, many schools. And this is a routine meeting, a board meeting that they have where they vote on a variety of projects at different process points, at different points throughout the process. And it was really kind of cool because we've been at the beginning stage, we've been on the outside looking in, and then we've watched Bourne move through all of the processes, these points, the big highlight points. And at some point, you're feeling a little bit like a senior in the schools because everybody's looking at you like, wow. So we're really close. And it was unanimous, the decision. It was very well-attended. We get up and said, thank you, really. And we're happy with the process. It was nice. There will be a letter that we should have tomorrow about...
They approved the funding, is what you want to say.
Well, clarification. They approved the schematic design.
Yeah, and the funding.
And the funding for...
Their participation.
For their participation.
Yeah. And it was kind of a big deal for us.
It is.
It was very good.
And again, you know, we extend our appreciation for this whole entire process and for school committee members, administration, Ed, and the community at large, who have, School Building Committee, who has spent an exorbitant amount of time on this project. And we're very hopeful for the outcome.
Just remember, December 6th.
December 6th.
Ballot vote, just like we did yesterday. Maybe not so much media coverage, but still, December 6th.
Maybe faster.
Just a little quicker, a few less questions.
And just to be absolutely clear for those folks that are listening, it was an important vote at town meeting. It was a really important vote.
It was.
But that put, that put the school on the ballot. It means nothing if we don't show up on December 6th.
And there was just a tremendous amount of support at town meeting to move this project to the ballot.
And I have to tell you, thank you to Bob Parity for giving us a little bit of extra time to talk that evening. But think about it, 18 months, $600 and something thousand dollars on a feasibility study to try to wrap up into a 15-minute discussion, and trying to inform the audience at the same time. Really, that was the task at hand. And he gave us a little bit of extra leeway, and I just appreciate that that was great.
Well, I think through the, you know, through the School Building Committee, the town was very well-informed even prior to town meeting on this project. Because they've been very transparent, very vocal, which I think helped contribute to the support at town meeting.
And we'll be having tours. We should probably have to be tours.
There is a tour coming up.
Yeah, November, I'm going to say...
November 19th.
November 19th and December 3rd, correct?
December 3rd from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m.
At Peoples.
At Peoples Elementary School, yeah.
Going back to town meeting, though, I think that Jim Potter chaired, did a great opening for it. But I think Mr. Hilberg did a phenomenal job of presenting to the, I mean, I'm surprised Hollywood isn't calling at this point. But there was passion on the floor, and I thought that was much appreciated for all of us that are behind the scenes working on this and trying to bring it forward. So thank you for that.
One thing that I just want to reiterate, too, is that, and I can't, I said this at school building at the MSBA, this is not, it started about building a school, about rebuilding a school. We had a problem. This was financially the best solution to partner with MSBA. It's come a long way since then. We have a great opportunity. We talked about grade spans, the excitement about grade spans, redistricting, you know, redoing the grade spans for the schools. That's really what this has become. So I just...
It's become more than just a building project.
Yes.
Do you think that that ends up happening in a lot of the cases of MSBA?
It's interesting that you mention that. And I would like to say yes, but I don't know that, we've watched a lot of the buildings, we've seen astronomical amounts of money. One building came up today in the town of Lynn, that they came to rebuild a building. And because of their population growth and changes, they actually, their project now is to build two buildings, to go to 300,000 square feet of space.
Wow, geez.
For millions and millions of dollars. And there's lots of questions. And the square foot, I mean, you're spending so much. And really, considering that, we're working, we're building this for the generation of tomorrow because they're going to need our help today. They're going to need it. They really are. So we, I think that's the part that came out. And, but there are, once in a while, there are representatives of districts that get up and talk more of the process and less about the school. And I think that's important. And I think the MS, the executive board, I know, I'm very confident now that the executive board really needs that feedback. They need to know that they're not just putting walls up and brick and mortar, that they're actually improving the educational experience for the students of the state, that it's working.
That's cool.
Right. And I think that you can see them perk up and respond and ask questions. And the educational package that Superintendent Lamarchand and his staff had to put together, I mean, I can't imagine how many hours you spent on that alone. And then redoing it again, just...
Very detailed.
And they, they hold your feet to the fire. That's what you're going to do, and that's what you're going to do. You say you're going to do it, you're going to do it.
I was just going to add that this is, you know, for some people, this is not your father's, but it's really not your father's. It's not your uncle's MSBA. This is a completely different MSBA than even when Bourne Dale was built. The amount of effort that's put in, and you have to follow, not only do you have to follow it, I mean, you could get away with, you know, probably just going through the motions to a certain extent, but MSBA is going to tag you on that. They're going to bust you on that. So if you take the time to go through their entire process the way it is, it is a huge investment in the community and in this actual building, which is why we got to where we got to.
Right.
Because they have a very specific process that they, you have to follow, that they're going to watch you go through and make sure that it is a long-term investment for this community. You know, the example that we brought up in the past is Bourne Dale was not built under this. So Bourne Dale wasn't actually built to be a 50-year school. It's going to be a 50-year school for us, don't get me wrong. But this building is built to last 50 years at a minimum because of their processes that are in place. But it's not your father's, it's not your uncle's MSBA anymore, or your aunt's.
So they've evolved, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, they have.
I said this that night, and I still think it's worth repeating. It's going to cost every, the community member of this town, the taxpayers of this town, between $150 to $165 per year to build this school. But with the MSBA's input, the belief in us, they're spending for every tax member, every taxpayer, over $103 for every taxpayer in this town, they're giving us an additional $103 they're putting into this. They're their partner. And you can't lose sight of that. They believe in us, so. December 6th.
So what are the next steps now? We're just, with MSBA, they've approved the schematic and the funding.
The true...
Our next step is the vote.
The next step starts December 7th.
Okay.
It's quite, it's, it happens very, very quickly post, post approval, post-town approval. I mean, the meetings begin on December 7th, and...
You move towards construction, drawings.
And then it goes into an extraordinarily positive, rapid, multifaceted phase.
Right. Solely based on the building?
We've had a pretty big laser focus.
And the function of the building.
Right, exactly.
And it's a majority vote.
That's correct.
It's a majority vote.
Majority vote.
December 6th, polls are open. Okay, the next agenda item for, we had members of our committee, as well as superintendent, attend the joint conference that happens every year in Hyannis. It's the Mass Association of Superintendents, as well as the Mass Association of School Committee Members, an opportunity to attend a variety of workshops to, as well as to share, the sharing of how we conduct our business in our districts with other, with other districts. So if we just want to share some of the highlights, maybe, of those of us that attended, and some of the highlights, any particular workshop that you really enjoyed and engaged in, as well as Superintendent Lamarchand, we can start with you, if you'd like.
Okay. Well, for me, one of the, the messages that has now been, it's almost repetitive, but it's, it needs to be repetitive because we don't address it, is this whole avenue of us dressing, addressing mental health issues within our school, emotional issues within our school.
Social-emotional learning.
We're in a position now as a school system where we can't expect the medical field to take care of that for us. We, as an educational facility, have to fold that into our programming and what we do by not only supporting the students, but supporting the families, supporting... Now, I'm not asking to try to become a socialist school, or to try to become, you know, social service type oriented. But in order for our students to have access to what we're trying to provide as an excellent education, we need to be able to be partners in that process and be able to work with families and work with the medical establishment. And we have some pockets of that within our school system here. But the theme is overwhelming at this point in time. And that's, I think this conference really covered that really well.
It's funny, I think every year, if you've attended consistently throughout the years, there's always that hot topic where a lot of the workshops are centered around. And SEO, social-emotional learning, was definitely the hot topic this year. And there's abundance of workshops that evolved around that particular issue.
Right. Now, emotional intelligence is not new. It's something I've always believed in. There's no real way to measure it, but we need to invest in it and understand it. And I think that that's where you get the social-emotional learning. I think if we invest in our children's emotional learning and their capacity to learn emotionally and understand them emotionally, then we can get to the social aspect of that, and then we can actually get to the learning part, which is the long-term goal for us anyways. And short-term, long-term goal, well, the daily goal for us is to get to the learning part of all of that. So I think that they, I, again, this is not new. It's been a bubbling theme over the last couple of conferences and stuff. So, but I think that they really did a good job of hitting home on this and really had quality speakers and quality presentations around that. So that was going to be my feedback on the, on the conference. Other than the fact that I enjoyed networking with my peers and stuff like that.
Well, I'd say one of my, one of my highlights was hearing keynote speaker Liz Walker. I, it was just a great way to get it, get things going. She's, you know, her priority is students and opening opportunities in education and making those connections. And I just loved hearing her speak. So, and I also, you know, attended some of the social-emotional types of workshops. And also advocacy in media, something that is obviously something of interest to me, and talking about how we can make, you know, help our communities understand what's going on in the schools. And I just, you know, got way too involved, way too excited about it.
It is very energizing to attend the conference.
It is. And the media consultant that was running it, he was just wonderful. I mean, it was just, you know, getting people engaged in it and seeing, okay, what, thinking about the different possibilities of how, what you can do and how you have to keep talking. You have to keep putting yourselves out there. People aren't necessarily always going to be coming to us. And, you know, so, of course, I create more work. But I'm thinking, you know, it dawned on me that it's just so important that we also proactively, you know, make ourselves proactively part of, you know, Board of Selectmen meetings and FinCon meetings. And I'd really like to have some conversation about that at some point because I think those little snippets of things that you folks talk really fast about that are really good, I think we need to, you know, I don't always watch the TV and these very long meetings. And so I think it's, you know, that's one way we can engage in your enthusiasm and speaking quickly. I think, I say it fondly because it's enthusiasm. And there's so many things that are going on. So I'd like to really have more conversation, as I said, about how, how we can kind of divide and conquer and who's willing to do that. And I definitely am willing to be a proactive member in talking at the beginning of meetings, sharing what's going on. So that when we do have difficult times, it's important that we have a relationship already. And they're already, we're not trying to play catch-up and jam everything that we've ever done into, you know, one meeting and catching people up. And then I went to a really fun meeting about budgets.
It was really fun.
Oh, my gosh, which regional school was it? What a flipping nightmare. I can't, it was one of the regional schools in Western Mass.
Well, there you go.
Frontier, was it Frontier?
No, it wasn't.
Wachusett, is it Wachusett?
I think it was Wachusett. And two school committee members and then the DOE person. It was very effective. It was very good. And talking about how, oh, there was a slight oversight in spending, and how Excel spreadsheets are really scary and don't use them a lot.
That's Wachusett.
Yeah, it was, it was. But the women, the school committee members that represented it, who are on the committee, they were very effective and clear and, you know, this is what we learned. But I thought, I liked it. I'll stop talking.
That's right. Who's sharing?
It was a good conference. There was a lot of diverse individuals from the superintendents to the committee members. It was unique for the, one of the banquets for them to discuss the charter school was pushing. I think it was pushing the charter school that night. I can't believe it. You know, we have all the superintendents.
Tough to hold your tongue.
Yeah, it was pretty bold.
Yes. But it was very interesting. And I'm going to get that card. I don't have it with me to get more of that information. But it was pretty much a health program that Bourne Hill has, but we don't think Peoples has. And it talks, you know how you educate us about Title I, how we have it on this side of the cake, but not on that side of the cake because of finance. But that goes on the same way of how we're more, we see healthy people as more educated people who has more income compared to people who are, don't have that income. They're more likely to go to fast foods, frozen food, and become unhealthy. So it's very weird how you have one school implement this healthy, you know, activity versus the Title I school that does not. But I want to provide that information, you know, to you, so you can think both schools should have that.
That's the healthy kids and the box and all that. I know, I think I know what programs you're talking about. Kathy Cleary stuff.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Community eligibility.
Maybe.
Oh, it would be Kathy Cleary, the physical education teacher at Bourne Dale, has brought in the box program. She's brought in healthy kids and several other things like that. And so I hear what you're saying.
And ironically, didn't she win a Honeydew?
Didn't she win a Honeydew grant?
Donuts grant.
She's been doing a lot of grant writing and getting, yeah.
So, yeah. So I, one of my highlights was obviously the social-emotional learning. I attended a couple workshops on that. But the Wednesday before, I participated in a social-emotional learning webinar out of California for an hour, which really, it started off by sort of giving us the background on why, why social-emotional learning has certainly become the hot topic. Because they're finding, you know, the Ed Reform Act back in 1993 was great in, you know, holding accountability, having that equity piece and building the foundation. But they found that one of the things that lacked, based on all the data entrance, was there was still a gap in what was causing that gap. And they're finding that this particular piece of a child's, you know, development is this, is, most likely contributes to that gap. So I found that interesting. So I attended that, the same, the social-emotional workshop. And then another one was an early learning consortium. It was the, is it Lester? Is that how you pronounce it? Lester School District?
PBIS?
Yes, yes. And there, and how they implemented that, that model, which I thought was a fantastic model with the help of May Institute, I believe, also helped them with that model. So I did get some information on that. And then one of the other workshops, I couldn't attend Friday. Unfortunately, my schedule just went awire. So, but I also attended the new SAT and Khan Academy and AP. And that was the first announcement where Khan Academy has joined forces with SAT. And I think it's going to be one of our topics at Curriculum Subcommittee. Really fantastic things happening with the new SAT. And they talked about the PSAT and how the way they now approach PSATs, starting even as early as in eighth grade, eighth and ninth grade, and setting that trend. And looking at the progression, they can tell from eighth grade and project pretty consistently how a student will perform on the SAT in their junior, when they take the SAT in their junior and senior years. But the interesting connection is Khan Academy and the free, pretty much individually designed test improvement that can be given with Khan Academy. So I see some really neat opportunity there, perhaps at the high school level and maybe even at the eighth grade level, to connect those two together. And then the AP capstone, which I was not familiar with, and I don't, that's also going, I'd like to bring it to the Curriculum Subcommittee. There's, we offer just such wonderful AP programming already in its existence. And I don't know if you're familiar with the AP capstone. But in addition to, a student will be required to take four AP courses throughout the four years of high school. will be required to take four AP courses throughout the four years of high school. And they could get a capstone, which is basically a, sort of a certification in their junior, senior years by taking an AP seminar course and an AP research course and, which doesn't require a cumulative test, the way the other AP courses are structured. But they would, if they pass this AP seminar review, they, they actually get the, the college credit and degree as a capstone degree. So it was really an interesting concept. They couldn't spend a whole lot of time on it because they were running out of time, but I do have all of the, the PowerPoint presentation additional information on that. So it's something I'd like to maybe talk a little bit more about and bring to the Curriculum Subcommittee. And then I picked up, for everybody, I think some of us already have these simplified chart of parliamentary motions.
Should I keep passing?
I don't know. These are parting gifts for everybody.
So nicely in my purse.
Yes. So.
Ed, you want one?
So, but, you know, like all of you, I just, you get so invigorated and you get, you know, the, the conference itself, you want to try to hit every workshop you simply can't. But it's just, it's very informational, great for networking. You meet some such interesting people and you make some great connections too, so.
And I was actually, you know, there were times I couldn't take that significant amount of time off from work to go. But so I was very grateful that it was close by, so we could, so I could go some.
Right.
And I was a little bit, you know, kind of wishing I was like one of these schools that was from Western Mass that had to be there, you know, because they had to go the whole time.
Right, 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 right.
Rhonda and I sat with Agawam. And how many, how many years had that superintendent been there? Forty, thirty-seven, forty, thirty-seven, I think it was, thirty-seven years.
Who was it?
Agawam.
Agawam.
We really enjoyed him, Phil. We saw him all about.
Don't worry, Steve.
And the mayor is on the board on those state meetings. But the superintendent was raised and born, was born there, so, you know, they call him the mayor.
Wow.
But one of my graduate cohorts is now a school committee member in Lester. So I had a long conversation with her and I haven't seen her since the late nineties. So it was, again, it's great to run into a few people and find some people, yeah.
All right, great. So facilities update, the track, we have a few, few things on the agenda for facilities. Track update, the water testing results, if we have them, and then, of course, the AHARA.
Yeah, okay, I'll give you the update. The track, if you've been, I know you've seen it, the track, the track itself is completed as of like two weeks ago. What they're finishing up on this week, or probably finish next week, is the shop what area. And I met last week with the engineer from Gale. We went, walked the track and there's a punch list he's working on to get, get to the contractor for some minor things around the track and the fencing that has to be addressed. So we do anticipate it being completed next, you know, week, you know, two weeks probably at the most, everything should be completed. Having some discussions with them, they are way overdue, you know, on the completion date and there were some penalties in the contract. And so we're gonna have some conversation with them. They're aware of that, that we're gonna have to address that situation. We'll be, I'm trying to schedule something probably for next week. And I think Mr. Hilberg wants, we talked about, I'll talk to you about it, about if we can schedule a time to meet with the contractor about that. I have had some inquiries about access to the track from the public. I mean, the track is available for general public. You know, there are gates, double gates are locked, so people can't access a vehicle obviously, but there are four pedestrian gates. I mean, people can access the track to public, but we don't really want people down there when school's in session. We really don't want people on the school grounds when school's in session. Other than that, you know, the, it's available for the public to use the track, you know, any, you know, as of today or as of a couple of weeks ago.
Which, which was not new. We did, we always discourage people not to be there during school days.
Right, right, right.
But after school hours, people can certainly go down there anytime.
Are there any rules with pets?
There is a signage, I think we're gonna work on our signage. There is a sign at the entrance of Peebles that's saying, "Leash your pet." We do allow pets down there. We could look at that. I do, I do want to get some signage up there about, we don't want people down there when school's in session or any of the fields. Because it does create, we've had somebody walking in last year and somebody saw them and called the police and we really don't want that situation. We'd rather discourage people from going on the track when school's in session. Or any, or any of the fields, usually stuff.
Correct, yeah.
So, I think it does look great. I mean, if you've seen it, I don't know if everybody's seen it, but it did come out. It was a long project, took a lot longer than I expected, more involved project. I have a lot of pictures. I thought I should probably, probably try to put them all together, some sort of slideshow because there's been a.
On the website.
On the website, yeah.
I have a lot of pictures I've taken.
I'll give you a login, you're all set.
I'll forward them to you. So I have a lot of pictures, I can probably try to put some together. Lead and Water Testing Program, that's, that's a state-funded through the grant. We did, we did take all the samples, I think about three weeks ago. We submitted all the samples from all four schools, I think about 400 samples we took. From all, all our drinking water taps, you know, kitchen taps and any other place in the school where you could, you know, drink wa, you know, people use for drinking water. So we're still waiting results. Those should be coming soon. I know the, the labs are inundated with, this is a big statewide program. So we're still waiting for results and we'll take action based on the results. The last thing, AHARA, it says A on here, which is.
I put an A.
No, you didn't. Didn't come out. All right, so I will say what that means. AHARA means Asbestos, AHARA is Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act. We, we're the acronym here, so I wanted to say one. So that has to do with obviously asbestos in, in buildings, school buildings. So we, we maintain, you know, the buildings, we have regularly inspected. We actually are having a small abatement this Friday at Peebles because there are some, some loose floor tiles, cracked floor tiles, a few different areas. And also we have like six windows we need to address that are cracked or broken. So we have to have the contractor do that. So that will be all, whether.
Estimated cost?
Estimated cost, the contractor's like thirty-two hundred, plus we have to have the, we gotta have to write a work plan, we have to have the.
Hygienist?
Hygienist there. They probably know, that's probably another few thousand. So I would say plus is sampling, you know, probably eight to 10,000 would be the cost for one day. So it is expensive. And we don't have any, which I'm gonna talk about a little later, but we don't have any abatement money in the budget this year. Every year we've had money from the capital outlay, but this year with the budget, they, they cut us, so they, we didn't get that in the capital plan. So this has to come out of, you know, funding through the school budget.
So in other words, we're taking $10,000 or between $8,000 and $10,000 from our educational budget to.
We have contract services budget in our, we have, we have some budget lines, but we generally, you know, unfortunately exceed those lines based on facilities, problems that come up. We, we do fund them, but generally we go over, unfortunately.
That goes to the general fund of the town.
And capital outlay requests, they happen, they have to happen.
Yeah, they happen now. Actually, we submitted, we already submitted our request for next year. And we did put asbestos was in our, you know, was in our request for next year. It was a one, we had, we're getting it annually, but there, with the town budget concerns last year, you know, the committee asked us, we withdraw that request for one year and we, you know, did that. And now hopefully we'll get it funded for next year and we'll continue on with the high school. Actually, right here at the high school, we want to do some abatements. Get the last of the asbestos floor tile out of the high school is our goal for this year next summer. I think that is all I have on that. Any questions?
Getting back to the track, it was just an observation and I don't know if facilities needs to take a look at this, but, well, I was in the snack shack.
Yeah.
There was someone who, a handicapped individual came in a wheelchair, did not have difficulty navigating down the side of the track, right? Came down from, from Peebles.
Oh, from Peebles, yeah.
Yeah. And, and navigated along the inside of the fencing.
Yep.
But had a considerable amount of difficulty exiting the fence itself and having a place to view the game. So is it required, should we look into a designated handicap area for view?
Was this two weeks ago when we had the, there was, the fences were still taped and?
No, 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 this was just this, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
There were a couple of areas we could designate, I mean, a couple of areas where you can stand along the fence, that you're just outside of the bleachers, so you're not blocking the view. You could have, we could probably designate those areas.
I think there should be some, easily accessible.
We could put a sign there maybe.
For designated areas for handicap only to view. They, I think it was, it might have been Ricky who recommended that they go back to the inside of the track to be able to view because of course, when you're sitting in a wheelchair, the fence.
Right, I don't know how that would work. That's another challenge, the fence.
But then also the, just, just.
Difficulty of wheeling the wheelchair from the track, exiting, you know, the fence was, you know, just gravel and it was very difficult to, for that individual. There was no way they could have done it on their own. They had two people pushing that wheelchair to, and then an obstructed view until, until we brought back inside to be able to see at least some of the game.
I've noted at facilities that it's, you know, over here, carefully, because of my views.
Okay. And Ed and I have been working on pathways and stuff and all the flow of stuff and all that around there, yeah.
I still saw, you know, visiting teens running across.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, getting to the snack shack.
But no, we should definitely address the handicap accessibility and designated areas and all that, and expectations around that, yeah. Because we should also have graduation in mind too, coming up too, and what that looks like.
Any other questions for Ed? Continuing Ed with the SWOT.
Yes, SWOT, okay, I'll move on to that. So we do this quarterly, actually we've already through the first quarter of the year here. This is the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. I just highlight the ones that are new since the last time I did this. The strengths, which are internal to the organization here. We have completed, or we're just having more meetings to finalize the HAC management system at, at the middle school, which is gonna help us to manage the system and just turn things, motors off, turn fans off that we haven't really been able to do for the last few years because the system was so antiquated. So I'm hoping, you know, it's probably 95% there. We still have some more tweaks we're trying to work on. Now that it's, it's all installed in the summertime, so now the heating season's here, now we can find the issues because you really can't test it, you know, when it's 80 degrees outside. So we are finding some issues now, which we're working on with the contractor, was trying to schedule a meeting, I think we're gonna meet Wednesday morning, go over a punch list and some other things we may want to do to the system, like put glycol in it and do some things like that. Yeah, we, yeah, we're well in the budget. We had, most of it is funded through Cape Light Compact, the bulk of it, plus we had our own town contribution. And we had funding from capital outlay over two years to cover that. So actually, we're probably returning quite a bit back to capital outlay once it's all completed. They've already questioned me about that, so, yeah. About, you know, if we're gonna need all the money, you know. So I forget, I believe, I don't want to say a number, it's significant money will go back. I think we had $195,000 and we're not gonna, we send maybe three-fourths of that maybe we'll have to end up spending, depending on these other things. Things come up that wasn't in the scope and they've, that's what we're talking about now, they discovered. And so we have the funding, we want to obviously address all those things going forward, you know, so it'll be running the best it can. So that's hope the positive. We're still reviewing strengths. We actually already met and did our, went line by line over the budget a couple of weeks ago. So we still do that on a regular basis.
See, that was enthusiasm.
Enthusiasm, yeah. It's a fun day.
It is.
Yes. So we have done that. Weaknesses, one thing I already mentioned was no capital, you know, outlay funding for asbestos abatement this year. So hopefully this one we're doing this week will be the, all we have to do this year, we never know because, you know, it's an ongoing situation. So hopefully, so that's, that's an impact to the budget. And hopefully not, but we still, hopefully we'll have a better year, but there are, we haven't resolved potentially the failing sections at, at the middle school. We, you know, it's still like past damage type of things. So we have repaired everything that had to be repaired, but hopefully we won't have any more issues. So we're trying for the glycol in the system, we think that might help with that, with that problem. So hopefully, but there's still a concern, we could have more sections failing over there, the boiler, spoiler sections. Opportunities, external, which was positive was, I said, for the water testing, that was all grant funded for the water testing program. I think the cost of that would probably be things like $15 a sample, 400 samples, you know, so it would be significant, I don't know, $5,000, $6,000 that we would have had to spend if we did it on our own, which is coming from the state this one, you know, one time. The school choice enrollment has increased, I was looking at the numbers, increased slightly. You know, every year we seem to be increasing, last few years in school choice enrollment. So that helps with some funding. Negatives, external, that we can't control, which has been an issue last year, hopefully it won't be a big issue this year, is sped transportation expenses higher than budgeted. We budgeted a little bit higher this year, but those costs are ever-flowing and we used a collaborator for a lot of sped transportation costs and we don't get a fixed amount because they adjust their, their invoice to us based on ridership on like on a daily basis just about. So those are really, we don't get a set number from them is the challenge that we have with the sped costs. So that's always a possibility with, you know, probably.
It's been difficult for the last two years because we lost a vendor that was a very reasonable priced vendor. And trying to adjust back and trying to fill out that loss has been, has been difficult. You know, I do think in this year's budget, we're probably going to, once again, increase the budget line for that, just because it is a very expensive cost. And with that single vendor who took care of a lot of this at a reasonable rate is no longer available to us, so.
We are going out, ready for transportation. We already have gone out to bid for regular education transportation, out to bid this week, so we'll see how that goes, regular education transportation.
So is that to more than one vendor?
Well, right, well, we have went out to.
Whoever bids, yeah.
Whoever bids. Whoever bids, actually.
You want for more than one bid?
We hope for more than one bid. It's actually Plymouth is out to bid right now, Plymouth Public Schools. And actually, they have bid openings tomorrow, so I actually may attend that just to see who, who bids on theirs. They use for a student now, so, you know, I heard there may be other bidders from consultants. I actually might stop by there just to see who's there at their bidding opening tomorrow. And the last item was superintendent related to me today, I don't know if you could explain it better, but the state mandated computer-based testing requirements in grades three through eight strains our resources. I don't know if we have enough computers.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not, it's human capital as well. There's a requirement to be computer-based testing grades, including grade four this year. We did apply for a waiver with DESI. I did receive notification this week that I have to provide more information as to why we're requesting the waiver. It's typical, I'm sure, to, to give them as much information as possible. If that waiver doesn't come through, then we may have to look at, you know, some part-time human capital or some other mechanism around that to, to pull this off this year. But we are benchmarking and building this towards this environment and feel confident that in 2018, we will be ready as a district for this.
This is as the result of the timeline with the.
MCAS 2.0, yep. Which is still, I mean, the, DESI couldn't even answer the, I'm off track a little bit. DESI couldn't even answer the question as to whether there was an eighth grade algebra MCAS 2.0 test. Because I attended that workshop too, which was not the most exciting workshop, was MCAS 2.0. But we have to have a computer in this case, so it may just be general math, not algebra, they weren't sure. So that's an ever-flowing process too with DESI. But this computer-based test, CBT, is, is very important to them right now that everyone does that.
Well, no, I actually don't have it on here, but I, I did have a conversation with DESI this week about our Foundation Reserve money. As far as, it has not been cut, as far as it's in the budget and they don't, as of this time, there's no plans to make any cuts because of 9C cuts the governor's talked about. As of yesterday, I talked to DESI representative because they've been told of no cuts to any educational lines as of today, of yesterday. So their first payment should be coming in for the next week or so. She's paying behalf of what we do. We do about $780,000, about $780,000 is what we're gonna get. And she's telling me that should be about that amount every year, was based on what we got the first year in the legislation. So every year she would expect about that same amount is what she told me, so.
And just, you know, Representative Veer is on top of this as well and he just, he wants to know when all this stuff is happening because he wants to stay on top of it for us.
So the payment should be coming in, I didn't tell you this yet, but this, probably next week, this week or next week.
Any questions for Ed? Thank you, Ed.
Madam Chair and School Committee, I have my goals for this year and I too would like to start. Madam Chair and School Committee, I have my goals for this year and I too would like to start pushing it towards a two-year goal process. Heard that idea earlier, so I'm going to try it.
Trending.
But you, in, in your file, you have my goals for this year and it's, I'm sure they're not going to be a surprise in, in many ways. The only, a couple of changes. The first goal is really focused on establishing a, you know, the ability for us to create something for teachers by their peers to understand action planning and around classroom instruction assessment to support all students within the classroom. An easy takeaway from this is this is within our district improvement plan and our school committee objectives around assessment. But this is really into that RTI or MTSS. It's really into that, to that, you know, establishing a committee for that. This is something that we just, and as you can see, part of, out of our mission is we really want to maximize each student's academic potential. So it's really ties all of that in together. So I really appreciate the work that the school committee has done with their objectives and the mission. But also the district improvement plan, as you said earlier, seems to tie into all this stuff and makes this a very formidable goal to put forward and, and achievable goal as well. The next goal was individual last year, but I think it's, we're better off moving it towards team if we're looking at a multi-year process for this. And it's really, you know, I do hope by June two thousand and seventeen, through all, any opportunities. I've identified two areas that were within my evaluation last year that were identified as needs improvement areas. And it's all tied into what is previously done around the, the student learning smart goal. But to take a look at instruction, specifically engaging all students, it's extremely important to the work that we do in assessment specific to understanding and making necessary adjustments to practice when students are not learning as measured through evolving assessment and assessment practices is what the end should be in there. But this is really, to me, it's all tied together. And I don't think, you know, even though I have June two thousand and seventeen, I think much of the work will be done by then. But if it needs to go on a little bit further, it needs to be expanded or adjustments need to be made, I think we can do that. But these are the two goals that I've set for myself as superintendent this year under the student learning and professional practice goals.
They don't show up on iPads because of PDFs.
They show up.
They're not filled in.
They're not filled in, they have the blank version.
Have you opened it up?
Yeah, they do the same thing on mine too.
Because when you open.
If you open up your laptop, you'll see it.
You'll see it.
Okay.
They are great goals. Yeah, yeah.
But keep in mind, team, team means it's, it's central office and principals. This is really our goal together that we're going to be working on. We think that we're at that, I mean, again, this is where we are with the multi-year plan. We're looking at assessment, we're looking at adjusting our instruction based off of the assessment, whether it's formative, getting into performance assessments. I mean, this is where we are as a district at this point in time, so it's all tied together.
Bring momentum, zapping that next phase that we're stepping into is all tied into.
Right, so to me, it really feels right as a district. It feels like this is really a, a strong component of where we are as a district. It's not specific to Steve Lamarche, it's specific to Bourne Public Schools, which is really the exciting part for me around this.
So like everyone else, what are some of the supports and resources you may, you may need as?
I think, I think, I think Amy said it right away, professional development. I think that we all need access to good professional development around assessments, around building assessments, around practicing assessments. Or, I, I just think, you know, we're at that stage now where we really need to understand what a quality assessment is, you know. Is it measuring what our students are learning? You know, we have a great district, we have great teachers and, you know, MCAS two point oh or MCAS period is not going to do that for us. It has to, we have to be able to monitor along the way, you know, as we're teaching, are our students being able to express, exhibit, perform, you know, the skills and concepts that we're trying to teach them? Are they able to, you know, are they able to share the knowledge that they've gained through, through skills and concepts? So we're just at that point now. PD is really a huge investment for us at this point in time. This is not to take away from individual PD because that has to happen. But as a district, we need more, a more focused cognizant effort towards professional development around assessments at this point.
And that, that, with that, you know, as I said before, we have limited time in a school day or in a school year for that. So there will be some associated costs with that.
Yeah, there'll, there'll need to be release time, there'll need to be, well, it needs facilitators as well, a lot of collaboration. I mean, the good news is we have been building for a couple of years now that collaborative aspect within our school system. The middle school's always had it. We built it into the elementary schools, now it's in the high school. So we just need to be able to understand what that time is and how valuable it is and what we can get out of that time. You know, the cost on return, the return on cost, all of that, I, I think will pay off at this point in time because we are establishing collaborative moments for our staff members. Because they're the ones who are going to drive this.
So it's a matter of. And personal development, professional development to.
We can do it that way. We can take teams of people going out.
It's mixed, yes. We just had a group of teachers from Bourne High School go to a training on performance assessment. I don't know if it was performance assessment or if it was.
It was just on assessment literacy, I believe.
Assessment literacy.
And we also had a group from the middle school go for strategies for integration and ELA. And just what you, what Melissa was talking about. So, you know, they can come here, teams can go there, and that's what's the, the, the nice part about the collaboration time. Because they could bring back what they learned and discuss it and then it can start seeping out.
Because I think we really have good structures in place for, for the actual instructional or the, I'm going to, I'm going to say it and I'm going to get in trouble for it. But the, the curriculum, I didn't say it, the curriculum through MERT, through our pre-K through grade six. And I think seven through eight is more, huh?
Very good.
I think seven through eight is more, seven through twelve is more of that, you know, their pockets of it and their departments and their, you know, singulars and things of that nature. But that pre-K through six model for us with MERT to try to make recommendations around instruction is really a good structure that's in place. And we're lucky to have that. But, you know, the assessment piece is something we really have to invest in, which will then dovetail into things that, this sounds very exciting to me. Things like looking at our elementary report card and what that, is that really a good assessment tool as to whether our students are learning or what they know? Are they showing what they know and be able to do and all that? So I mean, this is, I mean, we're at that point now, which is great.
And MERT, for those of you, is it the acronym for major resource team?
Major resource team.
This year the focus is on reading, but we, last year was writing, year before it was math. But we're continuing the, the writing piece and incorporating it with, along with the reading piece because they coincide and go in and out. And I like that you use the word assessments with an S.
Assessments, yes.
Because, you know, I think it's a disservice to our students to judge and, and grade their ability and their success on a standardized, one standardized test.
Right.
So.
Multiple measures.
Multiple measures. And the more we know about our students, the better success they will have.
You know, the demonstration of learning is just, it's, it's all tied in.
But on the opposite end of that, having all that data can be overwhelming. And there needs, and it's just, teachers don't automatically know how to, what to do with that data. It just doesn't, you know, it's an entirely different language in, in some ways. So, you know, I agree with that professional development piece as a district. How do we help our teachers, you know, look at this data and incorporate it into the instructional practices for that individual growth?
Yeah, it's really that assessment literacy. It's, you know, it's building that capacity. It's not, you know, if someone like me who's a detailed person, if I get all that data, I will be stuck for a long time on that data and trying to decipher in every way. But we need to build that capacity to be able to use it informatively and move on, but to help each individual child too.
Okay, that concludes the public participation.
Thanks for coming.
Any edits on the minutes of October two thousand and sixteen? Nope, saying none? Okay, so they're approved by consensus. The mid-year workshop, so in, a few years back, we incorporated, you know how we do our summer workshop and get a lot of things done during that time. We also have a mid-year workshop in January, similar to the format we used this past summer, which was in Plymouth. So we need to take a look at January and try to set a date for our mid-year workshop. And then we'll also incorporate some agendas items for December's meeting, bring to the table some agenda items for that, that January date. So if you want to take a look. Did she say August eight?
Big field trip.
Well, we weren't, we weren't like to England.
That's true. Although I'm not sure the weather's any better there. Yeah.
He has already come up with some funding too. He wrote, wrote to us.
He said he had.
Five hundred pounds per person right now. He's working hard for it, really.
So we usually, we usually do it on Saturday. I'm, I'm open to the possibility of doing it maybe perhaps like starting at three o'clock and moving into the evening. If you want to do that during a weekday and not give up a weekend day, it is ski season. Those guys love to play with us now. On the travel, so Saturday's not going to be good for me a little bit. So what, what do you think about like a three P M. start to a three to eight, three to eight? What do you think? Is that feasible, Mr. Ed, Mr. Lamarche?
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Just got to affect the day.
Okay, so let's look. Thursday the twelfth.
BMS bingo night, just so people know, yeah.
I missed that last year too.
Thursday the twelfth looks great to me.
No, um, yeah, okay. PD committee meeting. Martin Luther King.
That's the sixteenth.
So that's probably a long weekend then. So you like, many will likely be gone. I think they have Monday off though.
It's Monday off.
Monday off, Friday's an early release day.
Friday's a half day only.
So we'd like people to have people probably Monday to twelfth, so Thursday the twelfth, so you want to follow with Thursday the nineteenth.
That's Buondale Math Night.
An MTSS working group.
Yes. Yeah, because that's when that is, usually the third, Thursday.
But what about a Friday, does it?
Friday works, I think, because there's no, nothing scheduled for the schools at that point. Unless it's a sporting, I mean, there's sports, games and things, but.
So how about Friday the twentieth, that's inauguration right here.
Okay.
It's wide open for me. It's wide open for me.
Yeah, this for me too.
Friday the twentieth? All right, Friday the twentieth.
Can we say three P M.?
Three to eight, you said, right?
That was the right answer?
I, I would suggest that be ample time.
Where?
Three P M.
I'm, I'm happy to either way, but she asked what went on.
Right, that's why I think it's, you know, people's schedule. We'll have to, it's TBA, where we're going to have a.
We can do it in Missoula on a Friday at three days.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Lunch meeting or like a ten to three or something.
We could start in the morning. The principals would have trouble with coming to something like that, but the principal in the morning?
Other administrators could support them.
That's true, they do. We could do it in the morning.
You could do ten.
Well, there are people that, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do every time, so.
Oh, that's a big, oh, for the day, yeah.
All right, so we can move it back then. So like noon to five?
So are we going to do a lunch?
We'll do lunch. We'll work on that, bring home some ideas and great habits and. See what we can do. Of course, I know. Time in place, but, I, I mean, place, we have the time and date. Good. So future agenda items. A Eureka map, I have Eureka map update.
Yep, that'll be fine.
Will we be ready for some kind of MERT reading?
Probably more around the writing and reading, I think both, because now they're going to be kind of.
Budget priorities?
Yep.
Mid-year workshop agenda items we'll bring to the table. I also have a, a school committee self eval. I'm not sure if we should do it together as a group as part of that workshop or do it prior and bring to the workshop, so we can have that discussion too. But that, I guess we can work that into the agenda for mid-year workshop. Any additional, we have superintendent?
Award.
Yep. Twentieth. Did I send the wrong invite?
No, I'm, I'm asking about the December.
Oh, December. Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
It's Wednesday.
I'm all over the place.
It will be the seventh.
I would suggest for the, also putting down a, I'm not sure how to phrase it, but something around professional development, since we've talked about that a lot tonight. You know, maybe the PD committee could come and speak and talk about, you know. Right.
Yeah, because professional development is popping up everywhere, MTSS, I mean, every group I've been in, MERT, just, it's popping up everywhere.
So also the PD committee could hear from us, you know, or from, meaning from you, you know, the priorities that you're hearing for the district?
Is, um, talking about participating, going to other town meetings and things like that, is that something we should just take as a?
I think I, yeah, but. Should we have it then or should we talk about it at our mid-year workshop and try to then file? Do you think we need to establish something prior to?
I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of antsy on those things. I don't like time to go by, so if we have time to do that in December.
So we'll call it.
And we have to talk about our town, town leaders meeting. That's why, I don't know what else to call it. Financial working planning group.
Do you call it that?
B O S and FIPCOM?
This is the financial steering group, huh?
What do you call it?
A financial steering group? FSG.
So it is an existence?
We just did that this morning.
Oh, I, I was part of it.
Yes, you are, yes. That's what we're calling it. It wasn't called anything. We're trying to call it a name.
Oh, okay.
So I think, yes, we need just had to find a competing, she's forgetting the one she's going to.
I thought that was just a one term, we need to budget season.
No, we're, we've been trying to meet for a while, but there's been, you know, town meeting, a couple of other things going on, so.
Can we have, if, if, can we have an idea of like things that were talked about that?
Sure, we'll have an update on the financial steering group in our.
By design, the group is, in the, the league policies, it's communicated.
FSG, Financial Steering Group, FSG. We just talked, I mean, information, information this morning was the same information that's been shared at selectmen's meeting, finance committee. It was kind of like a groundbreaking meeting. It wasn't, you know, there were no decisions that were made today or anything like that.
But there is a case of material circulated that we'd like to.
Yep. I can put that in the file.
S C representation at, Judy, just the framing of that agenda, would it be like school committee representation at B O S and FIPCOM? Or do you want to go beyond that?
Well, weren't we going to talk about some type of communication plan or communication structure or PR, I don't know if it's PR plan or.
I would think that that one might have to wait for the retreat.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Maybe town communication, town representation.
Town representation, I think I would do, or representation at town meeting.
Any additional agenda items, Ed?
No. Leave me off the agenda.
Facilities update.
Oh, okay.
Wait, are the buses, what's the transportation timeline?
You'll have an update on transportation.
Yeah, I have an update on transportation, we can talk, I guess, do the 29, so, yeah, we can have an update on transportation.
What about an update on Capital Outlay? FY18, Capital Outlay.
Yeah, we can talk about, I think I already did that with the facilities.
Right.
So I'll put on the facility.
Sure. Trying to get out of the meeting, this won't let me.
Mitch moved it. For a second, all of the favor, all those toes, abstentions, the I have it.
Bye-bye.